Okay, everybody, let's get started. I appreciate the good crowd tonight. I want to start out with prayer and I'll ask our mayor Jeff Banks if you would.
All kind of grace in heaven, Father, Lord, we thank you tonight for the ability to come together. Lord, we thank you for all your many blessings. Lord, we thank you most of your son, Jesus Christ. Lord, we ask you not to watch over us, lead us, guide us, to give us wisdom and direction that we may do the right thing for our county and its citizens. Lord, we just love you and we thank you. What kind of gracious name. Amen.
Thank you, Jeff. Bro call, Daisy.
Joey Nixon.
Here.
Jimmy Whitaker.
Here.
Carl Sientz.
Here.
Frank Woodard.
Here.
Billy Bass.
Here.
Shannon Meche. Koby McKenna.
Here. Shannon is on his way.
Shannon's on his way.
Shannon's on his way, but we'll go ahead and get started. All right, before I get into the details, this item number four for the Budget Finance Committee members are here. This is the minutes from our last meeting on Thursday. Daisy sent them this afternoon. I'm not even having a chance to read them since this is a work session tonight. I don't want to take any motions or approvals or anything, but I want everybody to have a chance to look at them in our meeting Thursday for the Budget Finance Committee members will approve then. Just read over in the next couple of days and we'll take a look at it again on Thursday night. Before I get into the information, I want to kind of give a little overview for everybody here. I want to welcome everybody. It's a great crowd and I'm very appreciative of that. I want everybody to know what this is and what we're doing here. This is a Budget Finance Committee meeting that's a work session for the entire County Commission regarding our 2019-2020 budget. Just so everybody's clear, there's going to be no actions taken tonight. This is just for discussion among the commissioners. Any commissioner or not just Budget Finance Committee members, ask questions, comments, as you see fit. Whenever you want the floor, I'll give it to you. I appreciate the large public crowd here, but I just want everybody to know that there will not be any public comments tonight. If the Budget Finance Committee pushes an increased tax levy at our meeting Thursday night before our County Commission meeting, there will be a public hearing. So anybody from the public here that wants to speak, you will have your chance to address the full County Commission. They won't be denied. I think we've had really great turnout in our Budget Finance Committee meetings. I think a lot of the commissioners here are aware of what's going on and I'm very appreciative of that. A few weeks ago, once we saw the details of the situation we were in, Daisy, Jeff, and myself discussed that we wanted to do this to have all the commissioners involved. This is too big a decision just for Budget Finance to be aware of. So we scheduled this meeting. I want to clear up right now, for me, there's three objectives that I want to accomplish tonight. Give all 23 County Commissioners a chance to ask any questions they want about this situation. Explain to the full Commission what our options are going forward and then go over what the next steps and how we're going to proceed. So that's kind of overview of what we're doing, what we're looking for tonight. I'm going to start out, give me just a second, I'll bring up. I've got Ben Rogers, who's been a big help to CTAS here, and he's kind of going to kick off kind of some of the conversations we've had and present what he knows about our situation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As he said, I'm Ben Rogers with CTAS. I've got two handouts. I'll start. If you don't care, sir, I'll start. Just pass these down. So I've been with CTAS almost 14 years as a finance or a county government consultant. I started out as a finance and budget consultant within the Nashville when I moved back home to Baxter and Coquville after my uncle passed away doing this job back in 2006. So I worked with upcoming counties, been doing that for 13 years, and I do a lot of budget work with counties. I work with a lot of counties to prepare their budget and submit to the Commission for approval. So that's one of my things I like to do. I'm also County Commissioner of Putnam County, Chair of the Budget Committee there, Chair of the Commission there as well. Just kind of let you know, hopefully I'm not up here spilling anything to you that you think's invaluable because a lot of things, I get paid to know this stuff and what I'm giving to you tonight is hopefully something that you can use and understand about where you're at and where you're going. As we're making our way around, as you can see here, the first thing I want to do, I'm going to stand up here, I'm sorry. Page is what you're in. I compared the last two fiscal years. So you're in fiscal year 19 now, which will end in 12 months. So I wanted to show you kind of where you started at two years ago and where you're at now. Fiscal year 17, as you see on the right side, the, and I know this is a lot of information, but I wanted to be as transparent as possible, all right? I didn't want to hide anything. This comes straight from the audit. So you can access your county audit online on the Comptroller's website. These numbers come straight from the audit. Now, these two actual columns in the yellow are budgetary basis. So if you go to your audit, you're going to see two columns. You're going to see GAAP and you're going to see budgetary basis. Well, we use budgetary basis because you're doing the budgets. You're preparing a budget. So I use budgetary basis. And what that means is it includes your encumbrances. Encumbrances are contracts you agree to pay at a later date. So you don't want to forget about those because you've agreed to pay that amount of money. So that's cash you're taking out next year. Okay, so the two yellow columns are actuals. Let's start with 17. The actuals are a little bit different than what was proposed in the original budget. Now, I use original budget instead of amended budget because we often get into amendments during the year where we'll change expenses if they increase, but we won't lower other expenses if we don't spend the money. So we don't even it out. So I put amended up there just to see, y'all do a lot of amendments throughout the year. You do a lot of amendments. So that's why I put that up. I want you to focus on original budget and actual columns in 17. So you started out budgeting a little over $10.1 million in revenue. You actually brought in 10.7, which is always good. In budgeting, you try to focus on underestimating or actually being conservative on revenue and being a little bit higher on expenditures just for those rainy day occasions, emergencies. As y'all know, at Putnam, we've had an ice storm in 2015, we've had floods. New budget expenses, how you're able to pay for that stuff right away instead of having to get budget amendments or approval. So you kind of budget high. Your revenue was good for 17. Your expenses, you went over $573,000 from where you originally budgeted, all right? So you went up in revenue, $535,000, $732,000, remember on the right side of the sheet. The expenses, you increased by $573,000 and that net effect is going to cause you to depend on some funds. After you go through your notes issued down at the bottom, your transfers out. Every year, y'all transfer money out from the general fund to debt service. That's to make a payment on the general. That's not illegal. That's fine to do that. But a good budget practice is I don't have enough money to debt service to go ahead and pay that debt. Try not to be moving money in and out of funds all the time. It's confusing. The public doesn't understand it. It's not very transparent. So every year, moving $411,000 out. So that's going to debt service. That's part of your cash flow going out. So if you go down to the net change, which is the third line from the bottom, in the actual column for 17, you used $169,000 of fund balance. That was in 17. That's not terrible, but that was the start. Any questions on 17 before I move to 18? All right, so let's go to 18. This is where we get in trouble. This is where things start going south real quick. You budgeted a revenue, originally budgeted revenue, $10.344 million, but you only brought in a little over $10 million. So your revenue was this high, you didn't make it. You didn't bring enough revenue. So what was budgeted was $106,200 more than what you actually brought in revenue, all right? Let's go to expenses. You only budgeted $9.98, which is significantly lower than what you budgeted the previous year of $10.3, to almost $10.4. But you spent $719,000 more in expenses than what you budgeted. This is fiscal year 18. So that is a change, almost a million dollars. Now, when you get down to your notes issued and your insurance recovery and your transfers in, that helps that sum. Go with me right here to the net change for fiscal year 18. That's $401,000. So in the budgetary basis column in your audit, you'll see the same numbers. Your ending fund balance is $647,000. Where'd you start at in 17? Your beginning fund balance is 17. You started with, according to audit, $1.2 million. So you beat half of it up in two years. Two years, you beat half your fund balance up. Now, what I say is not statutory. You don't have to do anything I tell you. That's a good thing about our organization. We provide assistance. But if I was going to give you any advice, which you haven't asked, your budget starts with your revenue. You've got to have money to pay for services. If you're budgeting your revenue high and you don't bring it in, you're starting out in the hole. And that's what you did in 18. So to appropriately spend the money that you want to spend for services, you need to know where your revenue is going to be at. Okay? Questions on this sheet? I really want you to focus on ending fund balance to beginning fund balance and what the change is. This other stuff is just for educational purposes, but it's part of your budget. It happens. Questions on this sheet? We're about to move to another sheet. Okay. The second sheet I have shows you how you budgeted revenue last year and this year. So we talked about your shortfall revenue last year. I just picked five categories that were grossly understated.
9/4388, 3268.
Local auction sales taxes, the first one I saw. Y'all budgeted $915,000 for fiscal year 18 and only brought in $833,000. So that's a shortfall in sales taxes. Patient charges, budgeted $1.5 million and only brought in a little over $1 million. Now, my question on that one is, did you consult with your Ambulance Director to see what he or she, he thought patient charges were going to bring in? We and the other counties, so Jackson County is a county I work with, I've been working with for 12 years on their budget. I'll attend their Budget Committee meetings and I'll ask the Ambulance Director, what do you think patient charges is bringing in this year? He'll give us an idea. He's not going to be exactly right, but he's within a few thousand dollars because he does it every day. So you fell almost $500,000 short in patient charges. That's no reflection on the Director. That's just high budget, okay? Telephone commission, it's a small amount, but you fell short $38,000. You budgeted $100,000. Again, I'll consult with the Sheriff. What do you think our commission is going to bring, or telephone commission, what do you think our contract and prison board is going to bring in? He knows better than anybody. I'll pull him into the meeting and say, what do you think? We've got to, as I said, revenue is so important. You've got to know what your revenue is going to be. It is a guess, but it's educated guess. Fees and little salary. These are your fee offices that operate every day. County clerk, registered dean, cert court clerk, trustee. Little over $1 million was budgeted and only $966,000 was brought in. $26,000 short. Not a lot, but it is short. Prison board, same thing. $34,000 short. That's the shortfall I showed you on the previous sheet. That's where your revenue shortfall comes from. Now, there were a few revenue items that would come in higher than what was budgeted, but not many. Here's the key. Y'all have a cash flow problem right now, all right? May 28th, you have a cash flow problem. Why do you have a cash flow problem? Past two years and then right now. Despite budgeting, or despite only collecting $833,000 in sales tax, $965,000 was budgeted in sales tax for revenue in 2019. You didn't bring in what you budgeted in fiscal year 18. You didn't bring in $915,000 and then the budget increased by $50,000 in sales tax. Through April, you've only collected $685,000. Now, it's two months behind, but it'll be a stretch to get to that $965,000. It'll be a stretch to get to that $915,000. Patient charges, you only collected a little over $1 million last year in 18, yet you budgeted $1.4 million. And you've collected $638,000. That's technically through March, right Daisy? So you've got April, May, and June. If you can make up $800,000 in three months, it'll be there. Telephone commission, you did decrease the budget there, so that was good because you only collected $61,000 last year. You brought it down to $75,000. You're at $55,000 now. You'll probably make that. Good job, Sheriff. Fees and little salary, you budgeted $1 million. You budgeted $8,000 more in 19 than you did in 18. You only brought in $976,000 in 18. You budgeted $8,000 more and you're not even halfway there. Contract and prison board, same thing. You budgeted the same amount of money previous year. You didn't collect it last year, but you budgeted the same amount of money and you're not halfway there. That's why your cash flow is so short right now. And I'm not yelling at you. I hope you don't think I'm yelling at you. I was told to be as transparent and as honest as possible. They asked me how they get here and they actually knew that, but they wanted my confirmation. This is how you got where you're at, all right? So revenue is so important. As you're going through this budget process this time, don't shortchange your revenue. Couple more things I'll say and then I'll shut up. Again, this is not illegal what I'm about to say, but good budget practice is very important to what services you provide your constituents. Since 2010, the county's issued 10 capital outlay notes less than $2,000. So there's 10 capital outlay notes issued. Some of them are $50,000, some of them are $70,000, a couple of them are $190,000, $191,000. That's okay. You can do that legally. But to keep putting, kicking it down the road, kicking the can down the road, y'all heard that, on these small issues is you're paying interest costs, you're paying closing costs on every issue you do. Try to pay cash as far as much as possible. Try to pay cash for patrol cars, maybe an ambulance, whatever else. That's kind of got you where you're at too, is because you're paying extra costs you don't need to. We talked about the $411,000 transfer from the general fund to the jail. Try to supplement your general, or debt service budget to pay the debt you owe. Don't rely on general fund revenue to get it over to debt service to pay for it. The last thing I'll talk about, your maintenance of effort for officials' offices. So in the general fund, you have maintenance of effort by law, by statute, for the sheriff's office, for the assessor, for the election commission, for the library. What's that mean? For the sheriff's office, it means you cannot cut his employee compensation or benefits from the previous year unless he agrees to do it, which has never happened, I don't think, in the history of Tennessee government. And that's fair to say. I mean, I wouldn't cut my budget either. So you cannot cut his employees' salaries. That's law unless he agrees to. The assessor's office, you have to have one person in that office for every 4,500 parcels. And I don't know where you're at right now, but that's another MOE. Election commission, you cannot cut their total budget from comparable years to the next year. So the last election year, you cannot cut it to the next election year. The last non-election year, you cannot cut it to the next non-election year. They have to have that same amount of appropriations they did before. So I know libraries, cannot cut their total budget, but you appropriated last year. So that's your MOE issue with your general fund budget. Either you love what I say or you hate it. Which one is it?
I'm hoping they've heard it. It was just coming from another client, which is good. Any questions? Ben, thank you.
I've got a question, Ben.
Sure.
Are you, and Chairman, you may ask me if this is appropriate question, but do you have advice on what we do?
I do. You either cut expenses or raise revenue.
That was an easy answer.
Yeah. That's your two options. And I know your sales tax issue, which Joey's going to speak of, I know your will tax issue, which Joey will speak of. That's something that was decided before y'all ever come along. Something that y'all can't change that happened before you got here. How many commissioners came to my orientation in August? You're kind of frowning at me. You like it?
I was talking about the one.
What was the one thing I told you about revenue that you could control? Property tax, right? That by law, that's the only thing you can control. I'm not saying that's where you go. That's the only thing you can control by yourselves as a legislative body without anybody else interfering or filing petitions. You can try to do a sales tax again. You've got to go through the referendum process. You can try to do a will tax to see if it gets petitioned. That takes a little bit. The only thing you've got control over right now is property tax. But you've got two options. Raise revenue, decrease expenditures.
Will you explain the petition part on the?
Will tax. So there's three ways to get a will tax passed. The first, the first way in the statute, already been ordered, says the County Commission shall meet two consecutive times and pass by two-thirds vote to levy a will tax. It's not increase a will tax, it's to add an additional will tax. The people have 30 days to petition. What they'll do, so sign petition, they'll take it to Ms. Gibbs' election office. She'll verify that 10% of those people, the people that signed it are 10% of those that voted in the last gubernatorial election. She'll verify that. She'll say, all right, petition has been filed. This has to go to the referendum. It'll show up on the next general election unless you have a special election. And we know special elections cost money. The third way is to get it passed by private act through your legislator. And I can tell you that no legislator is going to put a tax on the people by themselves. You've really got two options. All right, well, I skipped one. The second option is to vote it by simple majority of the commission to send it to the referendum. Just say, hey, we're going to vote, we're going to approve this, we're going to let the people decide. And I would encourage you, if you do one, don't put any limitation on it. Put in a resolution saying, we're putting the will tax towards general fund. We're putting the will tax towards debt service. Don't put it out that you guys have got that Tennessee COVID data too. I'll show that here. Because what happens, y'all, not y'all, previously, they put a will tax on stating it was going to pay for a certain project and once that project's paid off, it goes for it.
Do you know a percentage of counties in our area or of our size that use a will tax to support the general fund?
13 counties I work with, more than half do. Putnam County is the only county of Putnam. There's two counties I have, I think, that do not have a will tax. The rest of them have some have will tax somehow, I believe that's right. So probably two-thirds of my counties. Half the counties and more than half the counties in the state have a will tax. But supporting the general fund. A lot of counties, State's not here, a lot of counties do a will tax to support roads because they think will tax, roads, works, but not in my area. Good question. Anybody else?
So you said some, we do a lot of transfers in and out and using capital outlay notes. That's not typical of most counties?
Not for that small amount.
So would you think typically, do they have their own funds to fund projects?
A lot of times, they set up a capital projects fund, which is not statutory. It's an optional fund, but what it does is it separates those capital project payments from your operational expenses. So in Jackson County, a few years ago, they were getting grants for their airport hangar for federal grants of $1 million and they were throwing it into the general fund. And they technically weren't accounting for everything for the appropriations for the hangar. So they're getting their money mixed up. So I said, you need to start a capital projects fund. And anything grant related toward a capital project, like an EMS building or a fire station or anything else that's capital project related or defined, put in that fund. That way it's separate. I had a county, I'm not going to name them, a few years ago, that got a grant to build an EMS building, a little over $100,000. They put it into the general fund and used it to give raises to the employees. The grant provider found that out, find the county that did that. That's why it's important to have a capital projects fund. And you can allocate revenue to it, property tax, sales tax, will tax, or you can let it sit there and just use it for grant purposes on whatever you want to do as a bond. Usually a $50,000 capital outlay note, you would hope to pay cash for something that costs $50,000. Now, if you're buying 10 patrol cars, that's hard to do. That's what $40,000 share after you equip them, that's hard to pay cash for that. If you're buying three, you know, you can try to pay cash if you can. It saves you those interest costs and that closing costs.
On the average of the counties you deal with, what's the average will tax they have?
Pick a county, I think, is as low as $10 and I've got one that's up to 60, 60, 65 maybe.
It's limited on how high you can raise your will tax.
Will tax, no, sir. You can do it as high as you want. Just like property tax, you can go as high as you want. Sales tax is limited to 2.75%. Anybody else? Joey, did I cover? I think so. And I've told Ben earlier, the next part I'm going to go over, if there's anything I'm saying wrong, he's going to jump in and throw something at me or tell me I'm wrong. So Ben and I kind of have two different stories that end up pretty well in the same place. If you came to the last budget meeting last Thursday night, you're going to hear some of this for a second time, but I think it's good to hear. Koby had brought up, a few meetings back, you know, we need a pocket guide for everybody to answer the questions that we know we're going to be getting. It's the same questions over and over again. My pocket guide ended up being about six pages when it was all done. So there's just a lot of questions to ask, but I want to go over that again real quick for every commissioner that's here. So what you see up there, you should have a copy of this in your handout. On June the 25th last year, the County Commission passed a budget for 2018-19 year with the following. And this is, this is kind of, you know, this is what we pass budgetary wise. It says $1,825,350 with estimated revenues at $11,670, estimated expenditure $1169, pretty close, full $9,000 of the fund balance, beginning fund balance of $1,073,000. At the release of our 2018 audit, it was found our starting fund balance was presented to us incorrectly by an additional $434,786. I think that's within about $20 or $200 is what you had, Ben, so we're pretty close to that number. So this changes our projections. Starting fund balance is now $647,749. Your revenue expenditures stay the same, so your projected ending fund balance is $639,93. So I went back a little further than Ben did and he talked about, you know, different kind of things. This is just looking at our audited numbers. The last five audits, you can see in 2017, we started kind of going backwards as far as expenditures and revenue. But $25,000, when you're talking about $10 million is, you know, not a good year, but you can survive that. These are all revenue numbers that you can find on the State Comptroller's website. That's where I copied them from. The 2018 audit came out at the end of last year. You can see it went upside down $1 million. Audited numbers from our expenditures to our revenues. It's hard to do business when you're spending that much more money than you're making. So in the recent months, you know, this trend still continues. It's discovered that really there's two sources of revenue. One big one's patient charges. Ben's already hit on that. You know, another one that Ben talked about was the state inmates, which we know when you were going to take a hit. That's now got our starting fund balance to project our budget for the next year for One year's time, a year ago, we thought we were sitting on almost $1.1 million. Now it's $20,000. If you update our revenues to be what they actually are, your estimated revenue still now show at $9.8 million. And I want to note this, Budget Finance has actually made a few more cuts than this. We've cut out almost a million dollars already. So we're down to $10.7 million in the budget that we're trying to get passed. That goes to our new projected ending fund balance for negative $867,000. We've hit a rock bottom. One question that I know I've been asked a lot and I'm sure you all have, we had this problem, why do we remove the sales will tax and the sales tax? The $50 will tax and 3/4 sale tax that was removed was being used to fund the county's education debt service for the school remodeling that was done in early 2000. Both of those taxes were passed by referendum and the County Commission does not have the authority to redirect those funds to use that money for anything other than what the voters passed. They had to be removed the way they were and they weren't funding the general fund. The revenue shortage, now the sales tax, turns out after the research, was about a $100,000 hit. We'll probably project that way. We're upside down over a million dollars. So I don't want anybody to think that those two things came off there in the public's eye and say it'd be really easy to think that's the case, but it's just not. So we kind of touched a little bit on this stuff, but why don't we put the will tax and the sales tax back on? It's a long-term option, but I want everybody to understand why it can't be used in the short term. So, there's a lot of stuff here that I'm not gonna read that Ben really summarized this pretty well, but my summary is, we don't have enough time to enact a will tax before our budget needs to be passed come year due to the fact that even if we went, the subsequent meetings and the supermajority tried to pass it, the county, the voters can still petition for, how long has it been, thirty, forty days, I think, afterwards can petition, then it has to go to election. At that point, our time's up and we're out of money. Well, that's the sales tax, which I think is the most confusing thing that's ever been created. I said it's the most confusing thing the good Lord ever created, and Daisy reminded me that it could not come from the good Lord, it's probably the other side. In summary, unlike a will tax, any sales tax document must be placed on by a referendum and voted on by the people. And by law, fifty percent of any of that sales tax collected must be given to the schools with the other fifty percent divided into county and its municipalities. County takes a really small portion of that. Even if you max it back out to where it is, the most you'd be looking at is probably between a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars that you can capture back. One approach, and Ben and I talked about this earlier, and this gets really confusing, it could be discussed long-term. You have a maintenance of effort with the schools, and I don't want any of my words to be misconstrued here like I'm saying taking money away from the schools, that's not why I'm saying all, this is actually more beneficial for the schools. You could go to referendum and reenact the sales tax. That money then in turn goes to the schools. And then you could recapture some of the property tax levy you're giving to the schools. That gets really confusing because you have a maintenance of effort, and timing that right, there's gonna be a year where the schools will get both taxes, and then you could drop the maintenance of efforts. I may not be doing a good job describing that, Ben, but that's a, it's an option that could be out there, but I don't know if I've even got my head wrapped around it, and it's not taking away from the schools, it would actually be, if you think of it, swapping sales tax for property tax. But again, you have to get that passed back being collected, and then you're looking at setting a property tax levy probably best a year down the road.
Do we, I know I heard them say we have to show the school system's growth money every so often, exactly?
We have to, I think, once every three years, you have to increase them.
If they don't have any growth, actual received growth in local taxes, then you would give them a three percent increase, but most of the time, that's taken care of through growth and property taxes. That's not, that's not had to happen yet with the county, or maybe growth through sales tax, if you give them a percentage. But yes, if their revenue, because maintenance of effort for schools is budget to budget, but when it comes to that three-year test, it looks at actual revenue, so if their revenue's not increased any, then you have to give them three percent.
My question was, do we think that the sales tax would be suffice to give them, I mean, more so than property? Do you think it would, we wouldn't have to come back and give them more property later? Would the sales tax increase enough to continue that?
I don't know, it's hard to say. The economy, sales tax depends so much on the economy. If the economy turns south, sales tax is gonna turn south, and you might be forced later down the road to do that. In an economic boom, they're doing better, they're gonna reap the rewards of that, but that outweighs a lot more than property values, so it's a valid point, Kobe, I think, that road, you may be forced to give some of that property tax back, so. One thing that's really important, and we bounced around ideas at the last budget finance meeting, you know, what's gonna be done since never happens again. I've made the statement in the past, I've been on here for a long time, we focused for years and years on expenditures, 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 then we'll check revenues. That mindset has to change, and I think Ben handled that really well. If you don't have money coming in right, you can't have it to spend, expenditures don't really matter. We've got a revenue problem. Going forward, all budget proposals will be reviewed by C-TAS before coming to the county's budget finance committee. Put Ben on the spot, but even if Ben leaves, they're free service, they're great service, there's no reason not to be using them, so they can help us along the way. Our director of budgets and finance, Ms. Daisy's gonna present updated revenue projections at each regular scheduled budget finance committee meeting and county commission meetings. The way it works out now, budget finance usually meets in between the months of the county commission, that way somebody's seeing it. Erica brought it up last time, it's a good idea, we'll find somewhere to post that on our county website too, so the public can have access to that as we go along.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Another thing, I don't know if Mr. Rogers went over or not, explain to the people what C-TAS stands for.
I'll let Ben do it, because he might know that.
County Technical Assistance Service, actually the statute calls us advisory service, but we go by assistance, so what I do is have requests of the official or department that I'll come in and assist with whatever. My knowledge base is, you know, we have special people or people that specialize in law enforcement and jail management, but the sheriff, if he needs something, he'll call me, some of the other officials, but we are free and we provide assistance. We're in our regulatory, you don't have to do anything we say, you won't get in trouble, not based on not doing what we say.
Are you considered a state employee?
University of Tennessee, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Good question, Ben. One thing that I get asked a lot, how do our property taxes compare to the county's general fund? I've included that in your handout too, there's the tax rate, and this is all pulled from the state comptroller's for their audits, and, you know, one thing that's confusing is penny values. Our penny, and this is from last year's audits, 38,868. And we are, besides the Cal County, you can kinda use, geographically, we think we're compared to them a lot, there's only 183, but if you notice there, their penny brings in almost fifty thousand dollars. That lake land has a good value to it, so. But that's giving you guys information, if you get asked that, shows you where we stand as far as related to other counties in our area. It's very confusing, if we're talking about a property tax increase, I want everybody to know what that actually costs the citizens. I put the formula in there and showed an example. I think, and I'll get to this in a minute, to balance our budget, you're gonna see the number that budget finance started with is a fifty-nine cent property tax increase. I've put in there an example, you can swap everything around. If that happens, if you now pay property tax on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you currently pay eight hundred and two dollars. But that in context with a fifty-nine cent increase, that'll turn into a thousand and twenty-three dollars, so. This was left in there, but it'd be probably a good, actually, let me come back, I think this kinda segues into our options here, just kinda what happens if we fail to pass a budget. So, Ben touched on this a little bit, what are our options? What's been discussed and the way budget finance feels, anybody from budget finance can speak up, you've got an A, a B, and a C right now. To be very blunt, it's terrible, terrible, and horrible. That's your three options. Option A is you increase property taxes. The three things you can set is the only thing that we've got that we can set right now. To balance a budget looking forward with the latest numbers we had, it would be a fifty-nine cent property tax increase. To do that, and I'm gonna let Jeff and Daisy speak to what, exactly the details of what this means here in a few minutes, but I'll get through these options. To do that, you're still, we're still cutting expenditures a million dollars, we're still making cuts. Not drastic as some, but we're still making our cuts. In two years, that should give us some fund balance, as long as expenditures and revenues can hold the same, at approximately two million dollars. That number's important because of the cash flow issue we've got. We need at least a two million dollar cash flow problem to stop our tax anticipation notes, and I'll let Daisy speak to that here in a few minutes. That's really important to us long-term. If we're looking at something, we wanna find something that'll fix the problem, not keep kicking the can down the road that we've done for years.
That's right. Some people may not know what a tax anticipation note is, or that we even do that.
And I'm gonna let Daisy speak to that in a few minutes, because there's a little bit of segue.
Right, so it's really commonplace to do a tax anticipation note, all that is, is they're called tax anticipation notes or revenue anticipation notes, it doesn't necessarily have to be tax money, any kind of revenue that you're expecting in, that you don't have the money to front the expenses for, while you're waiting on that revenue or taxes to come in, you get a note. You get a note, borrowed money basically, to run on until your taxes or revenue comes in. So, every year we do these, it's commonplace for Smith County to do these, it's nothing new. I talked to Mr. Weiss, and he said when he was in office, they were also doing them back then, however, it has come over the past few years that the comptroller's office, they basically say they frown on us having to do tax anticipation notes, which makes sense. It means we're not financially sound enough to flood ourselves until our next batch of revenue comes in, so we don't need to be putting ourselves or our employees in that position, really. I mean, basically in July, we need a revenue anticipation note to get us through, to make payroll and the expenses that are necessary until we start collecting taxes. We don't collect enough of anything else to get us by. So, that's what it is, and what else?
It would still, no, I think that's, I just want everybody to be clear.
Has we taken it?
Yes, yes, that's a good point. In the past, we've been able to borrow that revenue anticipation note from ourselves, interest-free. The will tax and sales tax that was repealed because the school bond debt will be paid off by June 30th, that'll mean that that fund that was sitting there with the large pot of money in it that we could borrow from is no longer gonna be there. The debt will be paid off, that fund balance will be down to very minimum, because that's basically how, I think as a commission, you guys wanted it to work, we wanted to pay off the debt, but we didn't wanna collect a bunch of extra money from the taxpayers and have it just sitting there with no purpose. So, that's a good thing, but at the same time, that means normally where I would call the state and get approval just to transfer that money from one fund to the other, then when the revenues come in, you transfer it back, I don't have that option anymore. So, at this point, I have to ask them for approval to either borrow from another fund, which we don't have any within our control that we can borrow from, or, I mean, the schools will be the only fund that has that kind of cash flow, or we have to borrow from outside source and pay interest.
And I'll speak to the tax anticipation notes, I had a conversation with Mr. Ron Queen at the comptroller's office, I believe it was in October, and we discussed something else at the time, but his words were, "While I've got you on the phone, I'll talk to you about something else." And he brought up our tax anticipation notes. And his direction to me were, "We really don't like those," which you've already said. He said, and to touch on what Daisy said, he said, "We consider you financially stressed if you take those notes." So, that was my first clue, and my first object was, "We've gotta fix that somehow." And after being in a mayor's conference last week, that's not the norm in all other counties, it's not a, something, they kinda looked at me funny when I mentioned that, so that's something we've got to fix going forward, because the comptroller's office has asked us to fix that, and it's always easier to do what they asked and fix it for you.
And I'm just so unclear, this plan doesn't get us there overnight, it gets us there in two years. So, what this plan actually does, and this is all, just so everybody knows, this is all still being worked on, I should've said this before, I'll speak to it again, budget finance meeting again Thursday night. Daisy's gonna work for an updated fund balance, which we think may be a little bit better. I'm hoping this number will come down, but it's probably not gonna change much from this.
Well, we had an air conditioner just gotta be repaired at the rest of the D's office today, and Eugene was just telling me of a leak at the border to jail, so.
The...
The words don't get better.
The fifty-nine cents how it's broken down, I'm showing here in this part, forty-seven point nine going to general, which is just to balance our revenue shortages, six point one is additional that's getting put into debt. With this plan, this stops what Ben was talking about, the transfers out. This is six point one that goes in, that covers the transfer out that goes to make the jail payment. And then five cents into the other thing that Ben touched on, I'm glad he did, I didn't know he was going to, which is great, capital projects. If we do this, we change the way that we think and start doing, and we start buying things, we know we have to have like cop cars and the ambulances from this fund, we've gotta get it started somewhere. So, that's what this plan is right now, and this is still being worked on, this is what budget finance is working on, that's Plan A, which is a large tax increase, it's increasing revenues. Plan B is if you do not wanna raise property taxes, you have to cut expenditures. Cutting expenditures means approximately a twenty-five percent cut, as the mayor can speak to, in some cases even more than that, more than twenty-five percent cut, in your one-on-one fund to make it happen. If you do that, you can't get, even at twenty-five percent, you can't get out of tax anticipation notes for three years. And, like I said, it's horrible, horrible, and worse. At the request of budget finance, Daisy sent out an email to any of the department heads to let budget finance and the county commission know what those changes would look like. Didn't know there was gonna be this big a crap tonight, but I'm really ticked and thankful that there is, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. At this point in time, if there's any department head, and I think everybody emailed that in, you should all have copies of it, if any department head would like to address the commission, I would be more than happy to give you the floor of theirs, so.
Okay, then if I cut my budget twenty-five percent, that would leave me in office and one more person. That one more person is not allowed to do the deposits and handle the money too, so that would be me handling the whole public by myself in my school. Can't happen.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Tony Turner spoke something about that today, that he would be down people because there's something, certain ones can receive, certain ones have deposits, oh yeah, that's another deal with him.
I mean, if I did, we'd have lines for days, because we have lines now with all the people out. Well, if the senior center had to cut twenty-five percent, we would probably have to shut doors, so we'd be able to pay the light bill or salary or anything.
Yep.
Well, I would be, the state's office, I have a shoestring, but I probably have what the lowest possible is, and I would have to cut out paper and bind cartridges for printers, which is very shoestring, but you only have three people in my office, so.
We gotta cut our district fire department from twelve down to seven, firemen, and you got these federal laws, when you got a fire, they use breathing apparatus, they got to be, when there's two men inside a fire, we breathe an apparatus, they got to be by federal law to outside. And when you cut from twelve to seven, you know, you got a chance that may not be enough people there to constitute, and I'm cutting my maintenance thing down too, of course you don't even know, you don't know that I don't spend, if we don't have to have it, but. I don't know what instructions I'm gonna have.
I would ask every county commissioner to read Mr. Carr, read everybody, and make sure you read Mr. Carr. Very well.
I'll stick to mine, Joey. The twenty-five percent cut, of course, it's gonna hit me harder because I gotta make up for some of these others that are under maintenance of effort to get to that twenty, to get to that twenty.
A hundred percent would make some effort too.
Yes, yes. Just in my office alone, that's the loss of my assistant, Stacy, and any travel money that I may have to attend conferences where I get to interact and learn from other mayors and discuss things with Ben. We would cut Brandon's budget by ten thousand dollars, after he's already agreed to that, so that's about a twenty-six percent cut from Brandon on the attorney side, which does part of that. On the cult compliance side, we would cut a part-time employee, which is about fifteen thousand dollars. County buildings, probably looking, and this is just rough estimates, may have to be more, I would lose one maintenance man, one clerk, one clean person, which would knock that down to seventy thousand dollars. To get the best cuts we could, we would cut a hundred thousand dollars out of our hundred and sixty thousand dollar budget for county buildings, so we would have sixty thousand dollars a year to take care of every building we own, including the jail. To also get the money to save, the fitness center in South Carriage, we would close, that would be ninety thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars saved. And as Ms. Jan already spoke, we would close the senior citizen center and for a savings of sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five. And then if you go to the Ag Center, Crump Parish Kids Central, we would probably cut about ten thousand dollars out of those, just to get to that four hundred thousand dollar more, and it would, it would probably end up being more there. As you can see, we save the money, but it will reduce services and cost approximately six people their jobs. I hope we don't come to this option, but that's where we're at. Everything that was said tonight is grim and dim and don't like it, I don't like the property tax, I wish there was a way we could do this with a will tax or a sales tax, but that is not a viable option at this moment, so just, I will support whatever the county commission budget proves and puts forth to us, we will make it work.
Mr. Carr, if you can translate.
Twenty-five percent cut of the EMS budget would mean we, you don't know, we staff three stations here in the county, twenty-four hours a day, that would mean closing one of those stations completely and taking a second station for twenty-four hours to twelve hour coverage. That's just the bottom line, what twenty-five percent would mean.
Anybody else?
Chris, talk about what your cuts would be.
Well, I mean, ours would be people at the extension office, we would lose our four-H program assistant and our full-time four-H agent, so we would have to make decisions about how to do four-H without going into schools, because we wouldn't have anybody going to schools, which would mean somebody else, like the ag agent, might have to do some four-H, which would mean I wouldn't be out there helping farmers and going on farm visits, which would be okay, because I wouldn't have any travel money to do it, because that's where I get my travel money too, so. Like these other folks, I mean, we're talking about people and services, so. That's a drop in the bucket compared to, you know, losing an EMS station, but it's a real thing, it would hurt our county, I think.
Jimmy, you spoke about the soil conservation district, what they bring into the county, and if we cut them, it would probably end that office as well.
They bring in somewhere around between seven and eight hundred thousand a year that's used on farms, local farms, and they could probably stand it for one year, but after that first year, they would have to lay their secondary office.
Sheriff?
Just in your package, I told you, I presented two options, if we had to cut twenty-five percent of ours, the maintenance of effort, we couldn't do it anyway, but if we did those options, one option meaning we would shut the jail down completely, and by doing that, we would have to move inmates to other jails, probably pay for that, we lose our state inmate money. Second option would be shutting down every patrol we got, plus our detectives. Twenty-five percent budget would shut down patrol, the cost for service, and would not be any more from the sheriff's office to the county, it'd have to depend on something else. I just don't think we can do that.
Great.
Joey, now remind me one thing about that 3/4% sales tax. When we passed that a few years ago, the county voted on it, but in the cities, we had a referendum in the cities, and we had to vote as city residents to give that 3/4% to the county for schools. So, if we vote that again, I think the cities, even though it passed, the cities have gotten to vote to give that portion.
And they did not give that.
Carthage, they voted to it in Carthage the first time.
They never had. We didn't know that.
Yeah.
Our understanding was different.
But we voted to do it.
Yeah, the state never, the way they did that, it was never taken out.
Well, one thing about that, if you've got 3/4 of a percent going to the schools, the schools have got a surplus right now of over $2 million, so they don't need 3/4 of a percent.
Yeah, you would have to pull back, but like I said, that gets really confusing, I don't even know how you do that. Like I said, sales tax, I've done more research on sales tax in the last six months than I ever thought I'd have to, and I still don't, like, every time I hear something about it, I haven't found a difference. Is there any other department heads who'd like to speak? I want everybody to be clear, nobody from Budget Finance wants to see that come through, but our job is to put the options on the table and understand what the severity is, and I think each and every one of you is putting that together coming here tonight. We all need to know what we're dealing with and what 25% is, so. That's A, that's B. Option C, I will need some help with, and to me, it's actually worse than the first two years. If the county commission fails to agree on a budget, if we dig our heels in and say we're not going to cut and we're not going to raise property taxes, it gets even worse. At that point, the state comes in, they take over. They decide what our property tax rate is, they decide what gets cut, and it's all black and white, don't care what the services are. I know some horror stories, Ben, I'm kind of leaning on you, if you've got any, you can share or tell specifics of what we'd be looking at.
So, in my time, 42 counties, Sequoia County and Lewis County, received letters from the Office of Local, State Local Finance, which is a subdivision of the compter's office. They don't audit, they monitor budgets and debt issues. And their letters basically said, "We need you," or "We suggest you raise taxes this much so you can prevent from doing tax anticipation notes. Your cash flow is low." You've got to remember, the Office of Local Finance focuses on cash. Cash and fund balance are technically not the same, because you account for receivables, payables at the end of the year, that's a lot of stuff, but they focus on cash. If your cash is at $20,000 in the June, they're going to say it needs to be probably 15% to 20% of expenditures. And roughly, if you have $10 million in expenditures, you're going to need at least $1.5 million in fund balance. Well, $20,000 is a long way from $1.5 million. So, they will work with you, as they did in Cannon County. I've worked with Cannon County for years, and they said, "We need you to get to 25% of fund balance within five years." They're gradually growing their fund balance through a little bit of a tax increase, cutting expenditures, some other things. But I've seen those two letters, I don't have copies, that say, "We suggest," and what they mean with "suggest," "we're telling you to raise your taxes this much," or, and as Daisy knows, she's talked to Ron Queen, there are provisions in the statute where they can suggest and tell you what to do as a county. Now, can I say something as opinion?
Absolutely.
Or I'll sit down. County commissioners, you are elected to pass a budget. That was your main, that's your main duty as a commissioner. You're also in charge of policy procedures. If you decide to let the state come in, I think you're diverting your responsibility as a county commissioner.
I agree.
That's just my opinion.
I agree.
I wouldn't do that in public. So, two instances I know of, I think maybe a few years ago, 30, 40 years ago, they did set a tax rate in West Tennessee, but I don't remember what the county was, so...
They set one in Jackson County, $6.50 for one year. No people like that up there. Commissioner confusion lately.
That is the worst possible scenario. And like Ben said, that's not doing the jobs that we got elected to do.
That's right.
So, our job as commissioners, and I said this in the last Budget Finance meeting, and I'm going to say it again here, nobody's going to like whatever has to be done, because there's nothing that is enjoyable about it. But we have to find something that 12 of us can, 12 of us at least can agree to. So, I'm trying to think what I've left out. Another thing I wanted to bring up, you know, we talked about cash flow issues, Budget Finance has kicked this around, and I'd like to see it hopefully come before the county commission in our next meeting. Leanne, we talked about this a while back. The county commission can pass a resolution where we can give our residents a discount on paying their property tax early. So, right now, property tax deadline's the end of February, right Leanne, is it? Property tax deadline, end of February?
February 28th, yes.
Understandably, a lot of people don't want to write that check till the end. They don't have to, they want to keep their money, it's understandable. What some counties can do is a resolution we can pass where I think if it's, they can pay in full in October, they get a 2% discount. And if they pay in November, they can get a 1% discount on their taxes. I hope we can do that, that would help alleviate this sum for the people that can do it, and it also makes Daisy's life a lot easier, because that helps the cash flow problem tremendously, because we have that cash flow problem and deficit, because money, majority of our money, it comes from property tax, doesn't come in until later in the year. So, I think, that doesn't fix our problem, but it sure helps a big problem that we've got of worrying about the money in the bank. It's like I've spoke a lot, it's like I've spoke a lot for weeks, it's like I've said the same things again and again, but I guess at this point, that's my spiel to throw out where we're at and what our options are.
I'd like to say something.
Absolutely, go beyond beautiful.
I'm new to this, and I don't know how many hours we've spent in these meetings so far, but it's been a lot. And I was glad we were able to do this tonight to get the other commissioners here, because I've heard out of some commissioners' mouths that I'm not voting for property tax regardless. Well, I guess what I'd like to hear is, we've got the options laid out there in front of us. Option A, somewhere between 15 and 60 cent property tax increase. Option B, what you just heard your department head say, cut the budget. Or option C, let the state come in. I'd like to hear from some of the other commissioners, you know, if you have a bright idea that's better than the three options that we have.
Unfortunately, I don't think we've got any of them.
Let's move this out here, Joe, if it's all right.
Yes, sir.
We come over 59 cent property tax increase, that number right there, you're looking at 2.2 million dollar increase in revenue from that, 1.1 short from where we had this time last year. Like I said in the meeting we had Tuesday, this time last year, 2017, our property tax was set at $2.32, and after the reappraisal, we dropped it down to $2.14. That's $700,000 in revenue right there in over a year's time, that if we kept it at 2.32, instead of dropping it, that would have been greatly needed at this point in time. Instead of going full all out, at 59 cents, blow it up, we keep the cuts that we've already looked at in the Budget Finance meetings that had been discussed. And you said we've already cut a million dollars for fat off the cow pretty much, right there. Cut that down and look at a smaller percentage of smaller cent on the property tax increase, instead of just going all out at a 6 cent property tax increase.
If you do that, that's an option, it's a very valid option. Now, I want to address, let me go back and address that. So, what you're referring to is from the 2.32 to 2.14, that was a reappraisal year. What happens, and I'm not going to be great explaining this, so Ben, you chime in where I'm getting really off here. You have the option, the Terry Collins office has the option, in a reappraisal year, do a four-year, a five-year, a six-year plan, that's signed on by the county commission. We currently have a five-year plan, so every five years is considered a reappraisal year. In that year, what basically, Terry Collins has gone over 20% of our population every year to assess our taxes. They get to the end, and they realize how property values have increased, and they go, "Okay, you had this tax levy up here, but your property values have increased, your tax levy needs to get brought back down to match what your property values have done." If we would have slept that at 2.32, that would have been increasing the tax levy, it would have been a property tax raise. Now, people would have paid more, because they, people think it's reappraisal year, "I'm paying more, you're saying my property's worth $200,000, now it's at $150,000." Well, now we got smaller, the bar got lower. That county commission at that point in time, and I know it was one of them, you'd go to the property tax increase, because people would have paid more. There's no doubt, looking backwards, that if we would have raised property taxes slowly over time, we would have never been in this situation.
That's right.
There is no doubt about it.
Absolutely.
Five years ago, we raised it 7 cents in the general fund, because we're in a situation like this. There are people, you'd have thought we were trying to steal their first forms, to be brutally honest. And we didn't even pass it the first time it went through. I don't know how we would have ever got it. I've looked back, and it would have been a lot easier to do that. I really think as a county commissioner and Budget Finance, I would have voted to do it. Come to the county commission and say, "We don't have any problems, but our rainy day fund isn't big enough, let's raise our property taxes." No way it would have passed, in my opinion. And if anybody, Dave, and Jimmy, and Chad, Frank, several have been on here with me for many years, I don't think it ever would have passed. We almost didn't get it passed when we couldn't balance our budget. So, looking backwards, I don't, as sad as it is, I don't think the situation would have ever changed.
That's, Joey, let me say something on that. That's one thing that I've always said since I've been on here, that people could swallow a lot better.
Agreed.
If you'd done it one year, you raised it 2 cents, and the next year, 1 cent or 3 cents, alternate it back and forth or whatever, instead of hitting these people with 9% or 23% or 59%, you know. You need to, you know, just gradually increase it till you get your general fund up, where you can buy stuff and pay it off, instead of having to borrow the money, like Ben said.
I agree. But looking back, I don't really say as often. So, if we threw out, I'm just going to do this on the fly, I don't think I've got any that's worked out, I do not. I don't have this worked out at all, at this point.
So, what we say, what was the number you threw out, Jason? So, 30 cents. So, you got 6.1.
If you do that, that's looking at 20, a little over 26 cent property tax increase. Even at that point, with the cuts, you're still not gaining.
But to cut the property tax raise, and I have cut the decrease, and I have cut it from 25% down to 12 and a half percent, see how that works out.
I'm sorry, I'm not following.
Got you.
If you cut your property tax rate half of what they did, 59 cents, so we'll say 30 cents on that, instead of cutting each department 25%, you cut them 12 and a half percent.
And then cut in the middle?
See how that works out.
I still think 12 and a half percent will a lot of work, it's still going to be a lot of, a lot of services cut. Budget Finance, look back there, and just so everybody's clear, any elected official, the county commission's only role, and I can reiterate, again, county commission's only role is to set the amount of money that goes into their budget. We don't line out a budget now. County commission has no way of saying, "Okay, you know, county clerk needs to only do this." We don't have that say. And it's not maintenance of effort, but we don't have the say in doing it.
Once the budget's approved, they can spend the money in that lineup.
Yeah. I guess getting to that, 12 and a half, mayor, that's your city, you've got to mean, what does that do? You're still losing a person problem.
Yeah, you're still, yeah, right.
It's definitely an option. I fear, though, if we do that, we're still losing employees, losing services, and we're taxing the people.
I understand that, I'm not suggesting it.
I know, it's not, it is an option. I understand what you're saying, you know.
I guess, I guess no thanks should be said. We already know in the future, some, there's going to be about $200,000, $250,000 worth of work that needs to be done at the jail. So, that's something down the road that we've got to add in.
Well, our historic courthouse needs a cooling tower, $70,000. That's not in this budget, so we're looking at a year in that courthouse without fixing that air conditioner.
And you didn't address that.
That's a good point to bring up, Jason. We all know that our road's in terrible shape, and we're talking about 59 cents and... Anyone touch?
It's like I said the other night down here, sometimes you can't go around it, but you've got to go through it. And if this is what it takes to get us straightened out, then it's better to go ahead and do it, in my opinion, and get it over with, than to keep saying, "Okay, we're going to do however much this year." And then a year we got to come back and say, "Well, we got to do it anyway." So, it's going to add up, but we need the money now. I say we're going to have to do it, we got to do it.
Well, something to look at, I mean, right now, if we did, if we went with the cuts option, or a little bit of property, a little bit of cuts, that, I mean, we're not buying any police cars this year, we're not buying any...
We're not talking about employee raises for any year.
Police cars...
For maybe a year or two, yeah. Yeah, we're, we're talking about...
You know, ambulances go bad.
Right.
So, that's not even, I mean, we're just talking about just getting by, you know, and we have to have ambulances. If we're going to have ambulance service, we have to have ambulances.
And this 10.7 million in expenditures, so we're clear? No ambulances? No patrol cars?
No raises.
No raises? There are things that need and have to be done, that aren't even accounted for, going 59 cents. Bad to say, but it's true.
Okay, we'll put it back at 59 cents.
At the end of the day, I went to a conference last week, and the only reason I went was because the federal government is pushing mandates down on states through their Department of Transportation to get ADA compliant. Well, the first step in getting ADA compliant is, is we've got to do an assessment of all of our county buildings. Once we get that assessment done, we have to start a budget and a plan for the next, Ben, 15, I mean, it's over time, but you have to do some kind of project on that every year. So, we were just, engineering firm and I were riding around the other day, just looking at block seven. Think about block seven and its handicap availability. It's gravel parking lot, and there's no sidewalk to the bathroom. Think about the courthouse. Old doors, not open wide. I mean, I'll go with this. Leanne, just put a new countertop in, well, guess what? That countertop's got to be, part of it's got to be changed to make down to make handicap access.
Oh, really?
Yes, ma'am. All our, all our paper towel things have to be to a certain height. Ben, if I'm leaving anything out?
You're right.
Your interest, the county buildings, not acceptable ADA, they've got to be in the world of the public, you can't send them around the...
Yes, well, this, and we thought we were good here, but this, apparently this ramp right outside the building is not right.
One inch of foot rise, right to me.
I spoke five years ago, the last time that we raised, like, I could have English or math, then, raised property taxes. I was the chairman of the Budget Finance Committee then. I was asked that night that we raised it, "Is this enough?" And I said, "I think it may get us two years," and here we are, five years later. We've kicked the can, and kicked the can, and kicked the can, and honestly, when we raised, the last time we kicked the can, too.
Joey, just today, you've had seven ambulance trips and two fires in this county, and it's today, this is not even a weekend.
Yeah, well, I mean, we've got it back at 59 cents there, you're looking at the projected fund balances. Well, those numbers are skewed.
Oh, they're horribly skewed, because...
Because those are the numbers if we don't spend another dime.
And we would hope, in the real world, our revenues come in, but we're projecting our revenues realistically now.
Yes.
So, maybe we have a good year, okay? Maybe sales tax increases, and maybe this goes up, but there's also going to be things that mess up, and we'll take them in, as we see.
One thing we talked about last Thursday, if we have another natural disaster, flood or whatever...
We don't have cash to fix it, right now. And my understanding, the last time we had a natural disaster, we fronted the money, and it was a two-year payback from FEMA, so, Lord have mercy.
I told them when I first got on this committee, and they started talking about this property tax, and Joey backed me up, I told them, "If you're going to sell it to me, I'm going to have to know that we're not going to be back in here next year, or the next year, fixing it." And us as a commission, this is just getting us out of the hole. Like David said, we're going to have to look at doing a gradual increase to, just to keep up with... Like David said, we're gonna have to look at doing a gradual increase to, just to keep up with inflation. Or if not, instead of doing one, you know, right now, we're doing an increase every five or six years, we'll be back in here, in five or six years, doing the same thing.
My opinion is, is 2021, getting back to Jason's point, which is a good one. We'll be in a reappraisal year again. The county commission's decision, be at that point, to go to a four-year plan, which I think is something they need to consider, we need to consider.
Kind of speak to how we got caught in the trap this year with our penny.
That's, that's the second most confusing thing besides sales tax. But our penny value, as you can see, and I've got this for me, it increased some, and Ben can probably speak better than I can, but, but not all, because two years after an appraisal, a reappraisal, you have to start applying a ratio. So, we've got buildings and everything going up everywhere, and we're not gaining much for our penny value. Ben, can you explain that ratio a little bit?
So, two years actually doing a ratio study, and the year after that, that ratio's applied to personal property, tax, and public utilities. And what that ratio is, is the state, this is generated by the state. State comes in and says, "Okay, this house is appraised at one hundred fifty thousand dollars, but it's sold for two hundred." So, the ratio's not a hundred percent. If it was a hundred percent, it would be sold at one hundred fifty thousand. So, state says, "Your ratio's lower than a hundred percent, because you're selling, Terry's not here, is it? You're selling value for more than what's appraised." Well, that's not Terry's fault, that's just the market. You can't predict what houses will sell for. Well, they did their study, and y'all believe it, eighty-six point eight percent, around eighty-seven percent. So, that means you're thirteen percent off from your appraisal to your sale price. So, this year, that was last year, so this year, you're, you're taxing personal property, public utility at eighty-seven percent instead of a hundred percent of what they owe you. So, if they, if the ratio was one or a hundred percent, they would owe you what the assessment actually is. Since it's not, they're gonna pay you less. And that's, that's just something the state does, and state law. So, how do you fix that? Well, you can go to reappraisal year for four years, instead of five. That shortens the ratio, but what if you have a good ratio year, and you shorten down the reappraisal, and then you come back, and you're, it's...
It's kind of a guess, it's like...
It aren't if you do, it aren't.
Yeah, kind of, but if we go that route, to me, one argument would be, it's kind of a little unfair. But in a four-year period, you're probably getting everybody on the same playing field. Derek Gompf spoke to us about that. You're prob, he's probably gonna have to have another part-time person. You're probably gonna have to spend another, what do you tell us, twenty, thirty thousand dollars? But to do that, in this scenario, you'd be gaining three or four hundred thousand dollars a year. But, like I say, bad year, it could go the other way, or it could go south, so... I guess I'm gonna bring that full circle to say, we should hit this two million dollar point about the time we hit reappraisal. I think that gets to what David brought up for the night, and Kobe's speaking to now. At that point, we settle down, we kinda get to see where our revenues venture, we've been through this two years, we see what we reappraise at, and then we can look at how inflation's affecting us. This, to me, is a little bit of a two-year plan, in my mind. That's a good point, though, Kobe.
The reason I asked him earlier, how many counties fund the general fund with a wheel tax, is because I don't own a lot of property, but I think that property tax is unfair. And it's, you're taxing the minority, because not, because less people own property than own cars. And less people own cars that, than go to the store and purchase something, and you collect sales tax on them. But, right now, we got a problem, and we have one funding source to fix it. Now, I can't speak for what this commission will do in the future, and most likely, if I vote for a property tax, I won't be on the commission after three years, which I'm not concerned about that. But I would like to see us put a fairer tax on, and potentially, if the cards fall right, bring back, give some of the property tax back. Because we're taxing the minority.
Yeah, I agree.
But, I mean, we, we can't make, you know, there's a lot of, we gotta cross a lot of ground before we can get to put the property tax back, but just a goal of mine, being on this committee, and is to not put the burden on the minority and spreading it in the future. But, I don't know if that made any sense, but I was trying to...
He got brought up, I'm gonna kind of sum it back up, and take your orders, and hopefully. So, got brought up the last budget and finance committee meeting, and we have an option. We can't, we can't get it done now, but we could look at either putting on or sending a referendum wheel tax, and then next year, pulling this levy back, planning that general fund with it back.
Joey, can I ask a big question? In your counties, that you say that the sales tax and the wheel tax is used for the general fund. So, their options are pretty well used up. What happens when they have to have a forty million dollar school?
They, they raise taxes?
Which tax?
Property tax.
Absolutely. We got to think of that, of course. Joey just got through saying that we had buildings everywhere. If we are growing, when they can't, when they come with that request, we've got to go back to what Kobe don't want us to do, property tax.
It's not just Kobe that doesn't want you to do that.
No, I don't think that anybody here wants to do it, but it's...
We're pretty lucky at the moment. Our, we've not seen, we've not seen influx of growth yet, and our school system enrollment is actually going down.
A lot of us, though, Joey, are old enough to remember, and Billy was involved in this. He got caught on the bad end of it, where we put off our schools for, Jackie, what, thirty years? Something like that? We put them off. At U-Milton, there was seven portables behind the school, and I'm sure that was at every one of them. Till the state stepped in and said, "Y'all are gonna fix your schools." And we did. But we had the wheel tax, and we had the sales tax to fall back on. I, I hate to, I hate to see us use that up. All of it, not...
I, I agree.
I mean, there's...
And what we said, we still have roads revolved.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we ain't even addressed that.
We haven't even, you know, we haven't even talked about it, which we know is a huge problem.
I feel wheel chucker, y'all good with the roads, hold on.
All right.
Good point. How much money was the wheel tax generating revenue?
Fifty cents will give you, fifty dollars, sorry. Penny and dollars are just dollars. Fifty dollars will generate you approximately a million dollars. Is that accurate, Daisy?
Nine hundred, nine hundred and eight.
Roughly, depends on what your county wants to place, but that's, that's about what we were, what we were bringing in, so...
My suggestion is, if we go that route, let's don't use it all. I mean, it was taking a whole lot to make the note for twenty-two, twenty-two million.
Yeah, and you're not going to build a school that day.
But I want to be clear, just so well, that's not gonna be an option to fix this budget issue.
Oh, yeah, I was telling, I was talking long-term. And Jimmy, I was talking about, I don't think we should put all our eggs in one basket. You know, I, I mean, I own a business, I understand, you know, you don't want all your revenue coming from one person.
And I agree with Kobe, we, we've got to think about our landowners at the same time.
If you took the three-quarters chance, I was putting it in capital fund.
If you...
You know, type up the tax, go to school.
If you, you could put it, there would be another option. I get, I get why, I think I understand, both of you saying, you're both right. You could put fifty percent of your three-quarters of sales tax into education, either capital projects or debt, as long as it's going to the building or school. But now, that is roughly eight hundred thousand dollars, is that a... That's actually, that three-quarters of sales tax would be less money going into the schools than the fifty-dollar wheel tax was. It's kind of irreparable, but...
Six hundred.
Yeah, maybe it wasn't that much, it was six, seven, eight hundred thousand, that was less.
So, you can't cut the schools on this.
But that's what you were referring to, right, Dave? And that's how the sales tax are being done before going to education.
Billy, do you remember when y'all worked that deal out? What it would have took in property tax to pay, to meet the payments on that note?
We did, it was seventy-something cents, I think.
It's all been done in property tax.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's an option, B and B then, so it was all.
We don't need to fund anything with one tax. We don't need to pay our bills with one tax, and we don't need to fund anything with one tax. And right now, what we're about to do is get out of the hole with one tax.
I get, yeah, what you're saying is, like, our option right now, what we can do is this, but long-term, you're asking...
To look at something else.
Yeah, to look at something else.
I mean, I'm not saying, you know, it's not fair to put it all on the property owners.
No, it's not, and especially not ones with fixed incomes.
And it's also not fair to put a school on...
You have retirees that work for their entitled lives and their houses.
And, and the commission made that decision back when they did that, you know, it wasn't fair to raise the seventy cents. That's why they spread the, they spread the wealth. Well, that's what we're gonna have to do with anything that we do, and we're gonna have to spread the wealth with paying our bills.
Erica hit on a good point, and you brought this up a lot, I should have brought it up. I had a note for that, I forgot. The county does have a few programs that can help for people on fixed incomes if we go that route. We have a tax freeze and a tax relief. I forget all the details, but Leanne, I'm gonna put you on the spot, you can speak to it, I don't know.
Last year, your income basically had to be a little less than thirty thousand dollars, or you had to be permanently, let's say, household income. Or, let's say, owners on the deed, not just household. But say your kid's on the deed, we'd have to count their income also. So, that program this past year gave back each taxpayer a hundred and forty-eight dollars, and the county matched, the state gave a hundred and forty-eight, and the county matched that, okay? So, that's a good program. We do have that in place for people that are over sixty-five. You do have to be under that income limit, you do have to have proof of income, or if you're permanently or totally disabled, okay? Then we do have a veterans program, and I'll make that clear, if you are a disabled veteran, and it's no longer one hundred percent service-connected, there are, you have to be, they have to send it to VA and have to declare you in that limit, okay? So, we would send in the paperwork to the state, and they send it on to VA, they get you approved, and it would pay up to a two hundred fifty, no, two hundred fifty thousand dollar piece of property for a veteran. So, that's a good program. The tax freeze, basically what it does is it freezes your taxes from going up. When you sign up on it, though, you have to come in, back in every year, and you have to prove your income every year, and that is for persons that are sixty-five or older. It does not pertain to anyone under age sixty-five.
Also, isn't there a limit on total assets that you can own on the other program?
Yes, the freeze is right along with the thirty thousand dollars. It's a little bit more median household income for Smith County, is what the freeze is basically.
Something about real estate that you would own, you had assets that were a certain level, and then you can't...
That is all income. If you bring in the income tax return, that income tax return has to bring you under that median household income.
I don't know if we, if we get that information, send it out, all measurements would be good, just email. Daisy, if you can make sure we get that, because that'd be good, the high-ups will get high-ups.
Yeah, especially if we do end up having property tax increase, that needs to be out there.
Agreed, agreed. That got brought up tonight, it's a very good point. Other comments or questions do we have?
I'm like Kobe, I think if we're gonna pass this large property tax increase, that we need to initiate plans to have wheel tax, and, of course, it'll take, what, several months for that, what B and B will be voted on?
It is, we could put it, like Ben said, there's two readings if we go without putting on referendum, two and a supermajority. We could put, we could put the first reading in June if we wanted to. And then it would have to go again, or if we just wanna put it straight to referendum. If we put it straight to referendum, our options there, we, is that you have to put it referendum in a certain timeframe, like, we don't have a county-wide election until next year. We could do a special election. But we could wait, the options are ours, right? So, we either pay the money for a special election, there's definitely options. We could start those options in June, but we just wouldn't have it passed.
You have a primary in March of next year.
You can put it on the March primary.
You could, but I'm saying, even if we did in June, July, we'd still be waiting till March. Then it goes to Lexi to get certified, and before...
But if we wanted to do it and take a chance that it wasn't petitioned, you'd wanna go through our process so it...
So it would still go.
So they would have time to get it on the ballot in March.
I don't have a problem if tomorrow, or Thursday night, we meet if budget finance wants to make that recommendation, we get the ball rolling in June, we definitely can do it.
What about before May 30th, can you check with Ms. Gilz and see how much it would cost the county for a special election?
The City of Gorns was having one, and it's about twenty, for just the City of Gorns, so I think it's gonna cost roughly twenty thousand.
I think we asked that before, and I think it wasn't a whole lot, or if you're county-wide, you're probably looking thirty, forty thousand dollars, probably.
Okay, here's my problem with a special election. We ain't got any money to begin with, and we're gonna be paying money to have a special election gambling whether it's gonna pass. So, I'm for wheel tax, but I'm not for gambling with county money. So, the March primary is, in my mind, would be the only option.
There's, there's definitely a lot of different ways to skin this case, I guess, and if budget finance, to me, that needs to be budget finance make a recommendation. If any of you guys wanna make that recommendation, get the ball rolling Thursday night, we'll do. And I think, Cliff, I'm gonna ask, when we did the wheel tax, it takes a while before you guys can start collecting that, too, right? It'd be, it'd be several months after the election certifies before you could even start collecting that.
Another thing I like to say, I wait on people every day, moving in here from different states. I ask questions, "What brings you here?" You know what their first question, first answer is? Low taxes, sandals. I mean, this county is growing, trust me, I know. We see it every day in my office, and that's why they're here. That's why people are retiring to move here.
Same, that's what I'm talking about, they think they want to move here.
Yeah.
Taxes, impact taxes. We have so many people moving in.
We talked, and Grant brought it up, we talked about that one night. Jimmy, I had the planning commission discuss what our impact fee is, and can you update everybody on that?
I think we'd be glad to look at it again, don't you, Jeff? If, if that, if that's the way the county commission wants us to look at it. We looked at all the counties around us to see what their building permits were, and we were right where we thought we should be compared to the counties our size. Our building permit is seven fifty?
Yep, seven fifty.
Yep, that's what it is. Is that...
The problem with that is it's, it's hard to guess what that revenue's gonna be. And you might actually kill growth if you go down that road. So, in, in business, you don't want that one-time customer that pays the big bucks. You want a customer that pays for the rest of their life.
And I believe Sonia said we were running a, did she hear?
Yes.
It was about a hundred-year building permits, I'm not correct. So, you can see you would have to raise it quite a bit to realize a lot of money.
Yes. Is that, the county commission have a final say on that, Ben, is that... On the impact fee? Yeah. By state statute, there are several things that go with that. You have to grow twenty percent from licenses to incentives first. So, I don't know if y'all are growing population twenty percent from licenses to incentives. If you have, you gotta have a capital projects or capital improvement plan in place, approved through, for the school system, approved through the school board, and through the county commission. I don't think y'all have a capital improvements plan in place, or written, approved by the commission. And then you can assess an impact, which uses the dollars per square foot.
Couldn't we raise the building permit? We've never been told that we couldn't, but I don't remember that...
I don't know, I'd have to ask. Sonia, do you know? I don't know.
I thought we could.
I, I did too, but I don't know.
And that's, we're talking about, we're talking about an impact fee and a building permit, it's different, different things, but now...
That would be the only option for the planning commission, I believe, would be to raise the...
Yeah, I guess the question I'm starting to ask, I know the planning commission always makes that recommendation, but it's not the planning commission's decision. It's ultimately the county commission's, we've never done that, and so I'm not...
Well, something that we, we could consider that doesn't... Well, something that we, we could consider that doesn't hurt our county residents and we make money off of our visitors, we don't have an occupancy tax in this county. So we're not catching any revenue off of our hotels, off of our campgrounds, off of our bed and breakfasts, our, what is it? Airbnb. Airbnb, those kinda things. Uh, so that's an option that I would like y'all to discuss maybe Thursday night. Another thing that we've talked about is, there's a lot of people that use our roads and go to, go to our rivers. And, and I don't know what we can do, we've talked about it, uh, on that, I know Akoi, Polk County has a fee that they impose on people that, and I don't know if that goes on, you know, though that you can, I'm not sure about the collection, only we're in the end of stages of looking at that, but that's something, there's a lot of people that use the Kansas River every weekend, so if there's something that we can do there that lessens the burden on our hometown people, I think that's something we have to look at.
That's one thing I wanted to say, Mayor, I understand what you're saying about the building permits, but in my opinion, you know, there's nights at the sheriff's department, they're tied up, three or four calls behind and stuff, and there's a lot of times the ambulance service, they don't have an ambulance service in the county, they got one on standby. If we're not growing, how are all these calls increasing so much? Mr. Carver knows, back in the day, the eighties or whatever, a lot of times ambulance service didn't have two calls a day. And when I was a deputy in the county back in the nineties, you know, sometimes I could work all night and not have one call, and now they're getting ten or twelve calls a night.
Because it is growing.
It, it, it's gotta be growing.
Yeah, it is growing.
If you, if you go to Wilson County, to Tucker's Crossroad and start back this way, there's houses popping up everywhere.
I don't, Joey said.
My closest neighbors, and I'll shut up in a minute. Or two years, or the oldest one's been there two years, Florida. Second one, California. Third one, Florida. The, uh, fourth one, just bought, um, next to me, moved in here from Maine. So, why, how are we not growing?
I don't think Joey said that we weren't growing.
Yeah.
He said our schools weren't.
I said our school enrollment, you can look at our school enrollment numbers, overall county, some counties are low down.
Could be lower.
And that's different what you're saying, I'm just talking about from a school, not the, not population.
You go to, go to Polk's Hill and try to throw your trash out on the weekend. It's, there's six cars a day. So, yeah, I mean, I agree, there's the growth, and it's only gonna come more, I mean, we could make some change, we could do some things in this county that would bust it wide open. If there was a grant somehow, we could run sewer from Gornsville to the Alexandria exit, Katy bar the door. And I, and we, you know, and that's the kinda grants that I believe we need to be trying to figure out how we get, is those infrastructure grants that help us grow and grow the right way. The growth will help us, but it also comes with a cost, Mr. Jimmy says you can't, your growth.
Never pays for it.
So, but it also makes you better. And that's, I think that's what we all, I think all of us sitting here want this to be, in twenty years, this to be a better place. I wanna, I mean, I wanna lead the state in our area in what we pay our employees and the equipment we have. I, I, I want to, because it's, we wanna be the best of the best, but it's, it's, it's a cost.
Well, there's one thing, you know, we talked about some of the candidates of running for mayor when you ran, and that was the county hiring a full-time grant writer to look into all these state and federal grants.
We have to do.
That's out there.
Development district does a great job with that.
And, you know, seek some grants for this.
Yeah, we, well, we, when we talk to the state commissioners on these kinda things, so, yeah, we're, we're actively looking at all times, we're, I mean, we're, we're the recipient of a one million dollar grant at the Baker property, we're.
Well, the problem with a grant is if it's not a hundred percent match, we ain't got any money right now.
True, well, and, and we're in that situation, we've got a, we've got an LPRF grant that was a god before our, before.
Revenue shortfall.
Before our revenue shortfalls, that's a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar grant, a hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar match on the county side. That money is to build a concession stand at Crump, a new concession stand in Crump Parish to replace the old one at the Lower Spot, a bathroom at the depot and a playground surfacing at the handicapped access, at Kid Central. There's, thank the Lord, there's two, I mean, we've got two options, there's a two-year contract, so we don't have to do it this year. And I don't, if we raise property taxes, I don't want to build a concession stand in Crump Parish by any stretch of the imagination. So, we have two options, we push this a year and see where we're at, or we turn that money back in. And nobody wants to turn the money back in, but I'm not opposed to it if it's what it means, 'cause I, as I've said to many people, we can't have nice things right now.
Yeah. You talk about the people moving in, most of them are retirees, a lot of them are, most of them got a deep pot, and they're running from high taxes.
Well, well.
When they come here.
Right, I talked, I ran into a gentleman and defeated his story the other day, and he's, he moved here from upstate New York. Comparable properties, in, in Smith County, he pays about fifteen-hundred dollars a year, in New York, he was paying nine thousand dollars. I don't wanna be New York, no way, no how. But it's a draw for the, it's a draw, and it's a good draw, I mean, it brings in good people and it brings in.
They want something we've had all our life.
Yes.
Well, they can come here and pay low taxes and when they have a heart attack, ain't gonna be an ambulance there to come.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
You're right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick on being, 'cause it's been real good for us, even with a fifty-nine cent property tax increase, we would then equal Putnam County's penny value. Exactly.
And if you look, we're still behind Jackson County.
I also told him, he's got a lot of nice property, because their property, their penny's four times the value, except for not Baxter's, they don't have a Baxter.
Well, you look at Jackson County, we would be still less than Jackson County.
Yeah.
They, and I just talked to their mayor today, and they're sitting on a two-point-two-million-dollar fund balance and a lower penny value.
I actually have a question for Mr. Rogers.
Just one.
And I know that this is just a small thing in this whole budget, but if, you know, you're asking people to pay more money, you want every single thing out of the budget that is like all the fat gone. How many other counties do charitable contributions with their government, with the money, taxpayer money?
Most of mine do, I think I only have a couple that don't consider that's nonprofit contributions. But, most of them are very limited. Uh, and I'm, of course, Putnam's got a higher penny value, but we do, our committee last year established, our budget committee said we would spend one-half of the value of a penny on nonprofits and that's it, we wouldn't exceed that amount, so that's roughly seventy, eighty thousand dollars.
So, is ours compared to others, the way we charitable?
How much do y'all give, I don't have much, how much do y'all give?
To, to put that in comparison, half of a penny value for us would be twenty thousand dollars, what's been passed in the past, it's been about forty thousand dollars, so.
Do we have set limits in our, like, do we say we're not gonna do more than that? Is it just whoever asks?
First come, first served. Whoever asks, it's gonna be.
So we, you can circumvent that, uh, we actually appointed a committee made of non-commissioners to be our nonprofit committee. And they met four, four nights with those asking for money and they decided on what to recommend to the budget committee, and as the budget committee will decide whether to send that on as recommended or will change it. Part of the reason we did that is it took a lot of our budget committees' time to meet with individuals, not that we didn't want to, we have the financial statements, we have the requests, but this committee was taking their time to do it and send it to us. But forty thousand dollars for y'all, that might be a little bit high, considering what you're, that's one penny, basically, that you're giving, uh, which is a good cause to do, but if you're asking me in comparison to other counties, that's high.
What's the difference, your budget committee and your fiscal review committee, we don't have a fiscal review.
Fiscal review, we strictly vote on, um, current year matters as far as budget amendments, uh, stuff like that. The budget committee does not see budget amendments during the year, we just approve the, we recommend a budget to the commission, so that's the big difference.
So you do have counties that don't do charitable contributions?
That's right, there are counties that do not do charitable contributions.
General question, Mr. Rogers.
Yes, sir.
What's, um, current population of Putnam County?
We're close to seventy-six thousand, I believe, we worked seventy-two, the last census.
And that includes the city of Coolip?
Yes, sir.
And everything.
Yes, sir.
You're basically looking, you're basically looking at venue-wise and population-wise, four times our.
Yeah, they're four times.
You've grown four thousand people in, since the last census, you think, at least.
And one thing, one thing that will come up, we'll have a census here in a couple of years.
Next year.
Next year, but anybody can, before we get to that.
Makes you feel better, we had a bunch of concerns this year too, so.
I know you mentioned this earlier, but out of the counties you represent, the majority you said are looking at property taxes.
At least seven to eight counties I represent see tax, so looking at property tax increases.
That makes, that might be a boost to supply a bit better, it might be a lot of.
There's at least five or six that have tax anticipation notes.
What?
Five or six of my counties do tax anticipation notes, Cannon, Pickett, Van Buren, um, Clay, Ventress has recently. Uh, that's about it.
So you're saying, y'all have a property tax increase, with all these new businesses y'all got coming in, that's not helping your?
Well, oh my gosh.
You ain't coming?
Um, without saying too much, we are looking to build a new jail and a new school and, uh, we have a four-million-dollar increase request in our general fund for our officials. And that's, that's considering the fact we got to operate the jail if we don't. So, yes, if we do all that, yes, we're gonna be doing what you're doing, absolutely.
You want to make, I might come in?
Absolutely.
All right, Thursday night, we're gonna over-sum this stuff again. What if we invite a previous mayor to arrange some wrinkles out that we've missed? We missing wrinkles somewhere, and he said the day he quoted me, date, fifty-nine and sixty cents for two guy and one lip, that's what he quoted me. I thought we were inviting Thursday night, like I said, we might, he might have some wrinkles that we can miss.
Anybody from the public is invited?
Well, I mean.
Daisy and Jeff went through this and they brought Ben Rogers in to look, we got a third party out to see. If there's wrinkles, I'm more than happy if anybody wants to know where they are, but we brought.
I think he might find, he might find something that's his.
I mean.
It's an option.
Anybody's welcome.
He's sitting on another task, he needs to cover something on.
I mean, anybody's welcome, bro. Always are.
You didn't give him a ride, would you, Joe?
Well, yeah, I don't. Look, as far as I'm concerned, after tonight, and I said this early, I wanna be clear, we've talked about the past, we know how we got here, it doesn't really matter now.
Move on.
The county commission is the one that passes a budget. Not Budget Finance, not a county mayor, not director of Budget Finance. Twenty-four county commissioners in Smith County put us in this position, and now twenty-four of us have to get it out, 'cause nobody else is growing. It hurts, it sucks, I've lost a lot of sleep over the situation we're in, going back, I don't know what would've changed, because like Jason and I talked about earlier, I don't think it would've ever passed and do it before now.
No, it wouldn't have.
But, as far as I'm concerned, me personally, after tonight, I'm burying it. Past is the past, we are where we are, here's our options.
Yeah.
And I'll answer any questions about the past, obviously, but.
We gonna have our meeting here Thursday?
Uh, that's a good point. We're gonna be back at the Turnerville.
That air conditioner?
Yeah, we got an air conditioner working somewhere, and so we found it.
Joe, can I ask, if we're changing the subject, can I ask another question?
Absolutely.
That might help us Thursday night.
Yep.
Our spending freeze is still on, right David? If that stays on through the end of June, and I'll look at the mayor, 'cause he's over one of the departments, you're putting off a lot of spending. Are you gonna have enough in your budget that we've already looked at to cover that and next year? Do, do you follow me, Joey?
Anything that would've been deferred, you're saying? If, if departments are needing to make purchases now and they're just basically kicking their can to July and go to. Tommy, Tommy Turner and I talked about that today, it's gonna put a bind, because he usually has around ten to fifteen thousand dollars at this time of year that he goes and buys his paper and his binders to do his work. Well, if he can't spend that like where we're at right now, then he's behind starting next year, so yes, it's gonna be a bind.
What about the new computers, we've got to.
And you're, just, just to add something, Brad, and your new computers are actually in this budget, there were some things, because we took that as a had-to, meaning, to be in compliance, we had to do that, so that actually is in the budget for this decision, so.
Really, what, the budgets we've looked at were for twelve months, but they're gonna turn out to be thirteen and a half months.
Which we normally stop spending towards about mid-June, early to mid-June anyway, so basically we added a few weeks to that, it's not quite the fourteen months.
And we're hoping that when we look again, and Daisy and I are watching this daily, the changes, 'cause we do have another sales tax round as the prisoner board coming in next year, we're hoping that, or next month, that this is gonna be better than what we're looking at some, so we'll be able to step back and maybe fix some of these things that we've put off, we hope. I make that, make that, don't make that promise, 'cause we don't know. I mean, today, I spent seventy-five-hundred dollars today on an air conditioner, because Jerry Lynn's office in Drug Coalition is sweating. Now, that's, uh.
I deposited nine thousand and ten for everybody today, so you're covered.
Ah, thank you, sir.
I, I, I kinda had a similar question.
Well, Jeff, they had a hot water heater issue at, at the, uh, ambulance station day that we had to fix. Eugene tells me there's a boiler issue at the jail that's gotta be looked at in the morning, so.
Gotta work that screw, that boy's not gonna be able to take a share in that, didn't he?
Right, I mean, so, there's some, there's things that we can say no to, but there's also things that we can't say no to, I mean, it has to be done. I, I feel like, right now, I'm living under a joke type deal with air conditioners, I mean, 'cause there was a problem Saturday night at the Ag Center with a, with an air conditioner that, and this morning it was bad working, I have no idea what, we've, we've got somebody looking at that, uh, like I said, the courthouse is, Kool-Aid Tower shot, Jerry Lynn and, uh, her, her crew was sweating, uh, so, when, when Terry called me today and talking about Ambulance Station Three, I would've bet a hundred dollars it was gonna be the air conditioner.
I guess I had a similar question that I actually talked to Dave about before this meeting. Daisy's gonna bring us a new fund balance on Thursday. I worried, the same problem I was worrying around, was that a false fund balance? Because of exactly what you said, because we don't want that number, we want that number to be realistic, not too high, not too low.
Right.
I, my fear was those things would make that number.
And, well, I agree with Jason though, if, if we know that that's a true number, we need to lower that fifty-nine as much as we can.
And I think that fifty-nine is a worse case.
Sure.
But, but I wanna be honest, I still think it's more than fifty, 'cause that fund balance is gonna be.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you look at our cash balance today, it's over two million dollars, right Daisy? But, we got a one-point-six-fifty-million-dollar interest, or no payment's gotta be paid. Yeah, we gotta pay back, that we borrowed this year to get it through. So, and then we got four more, two more payrolls.
Or three.
Three more payrolls, which is a pretty good league.
For the general fund, payroll and taxes is just over two-hundred thousand dollars.
Any other questions, comments?
You got a question?
Yes, sir, yes.
We sit here in this county, we're gonna make a thorough run, running from one end to the other, Interstate Four, how can we make it interstate work for this county?
It does if you leave it going. We actually spend on, on the interstate.
Doing bar calls.
I stood out there today for two hours.
I mean, my, my first.
Yeah, I think my judgment's probably insane, but.
I know where Dennis is going, and I agree, we've got to generate growth off that interstate, and that's part of our plan, but the, that's, that's not something that we as a government wanna do, that's, that's, we have to, Governor Haslam said it best, best, better than I ever heard it at a, at a conference last fall, he said, "The government's job is to create a climate to where people will put capital at risk." So, we need to make sure that we are set up over there and so that people will invest. Now, there's all kinds of things that are happening that can get there, we bought that property to Baker property. One good manufacturer over there could really be a boon to us, and, and, and Mr. Gross asked that question the other day about, are we marketing? Well, I met with the, uh, Friday morning, I had, I had a chance to be with R.G. Cormar's business, who now owns National Railway Railroad, there was a lady from ECD State and Dan T. coming with Tennessee Central. There, we had some really good RFIs come in last week, that don't mean we're gonna get them, but we have a, but we have a really good strong case for those. Uh, it don't happen overnight, but we are, we are actively working to get that new Baker property sold. If somebody was to come today and wanna hand me, and want it all, to build a manufacturing plant, we'd probably work a deal with him and get it, get it sold. But we, we have to do it the right way and do the right kinda jobs, because we don't want to, we don't want a bunch of warehouses over there that employ ten people and pay ten dollars an hour, that does us zero good, 'cause they have, there's no tax base in their equipment, they don't bring that many employees here. The goal would be, is the right kinda manufacturers over there, is our people that drive out of this county every day, have the opportunity to come back and get a good job and work here. And I think that's, that's our focus and our goal. I talk daily with, or talk weekly with Development District, with Tennessee Central, with ECD, and now R.G. Corman is big in the railroad, wanting to develop off their railroad spur, so the team, it's in its place to get it done. We're just waiting on that right person. I sent through a forum last year, they talked about how they got this tile plant in Baxter, and the gentleman was consultant, and he worked on the one in Galton, and he also got the one at Baxter. And I just went up to him after the meeting, and handed my business card, and said, "Hey, if you've got another tile manufacturer, call me, we've got a 120-inch spot, we'd love to put you in." And he said, "I'll, the next one, we'll talk to you." So we're working, I mean, that's, that's what I want to do. I want to get really involved in economic development and pushing the new, new and good stuff for our county. And this part of it has been, I'm with Joey, I've lost sleep, I woke up in a cold sweat the other night, thinking, did I cause this? I had to go in, and Daisy said no, so that made me feel better, and so...
There's a reason why we brought Ben in.
Yeah, yeah, we...
Ben's objective is just...
Yeah, Ben tells you the truth whether you like it or not. And that's why we, and that's why we brought, why Daisy and I, when Daisy and I first started looking at this, it scared us both to death, and we said, "We've gotta be, something's gotta be wrong." And to you, Frank, that's why we brought Ben in, who does this every day across the county. I mean, this is, this is his job, is to consult and advise on this, and thank you, Lord, that there's that out there for you. We've been on the phone with the comptroller's office numerous times, and I kinda told him the other day, when we called the comptroller, I felt like I was calling the gang board to go look at my dove field, which is not what you want to do, but, you know, that's where we want, I mean, I'm not sitting here telling you, I got the answers, and I know everything, because I don't, but I know where the answer, I know where the library is, is what I was told by a guy one time. So when, when there's free advice to bring in, that's why we bring Ben in, and Ben's been a valuable asset in the past nine, 10 months for me, because of, you know, you bounce things off of him, and his ideas, and he's seen, in 13 years of this, you've seen a lot and dealt with a lot, so, and I've leaned on other mayors for their experience and what they've been through and how they handle things, so. This is not something that we've took lightly, and to address Frank, I don't think there's anything we've missed, we've done everything possible. We hoped we'd miss something, and we haven't. We find to, you know, this is something that Daisy and I talked about three or four hours a day. This is just where we are. But, and as I say, I don't have a vote in it, but I will support whatever this county commission does, and we'll make it work, whatever you guys decide, and we'll, we will change how we, Daisy and I will change forever how we've done this. I mean, we can't, just because you, we talked about this, just because we passed this budget, and it's got another $10 million expenditures in it, well, if we're gonna have to borrow a million dollars in July, that don't mean you get to spend your budget in July. Where's this, you're under this kind of, we're gonna be watching our pennies for at least till October, when our tax money starts rolling in. So I hate being the bad guy, and I hate saying no, but that's where we are. That's exactly where we are today, and that's, that's the only way, I mean, I try to liken everything to your home budget. If you're, if you're at home, and you're broke and eating rice and beans, you don't, you don't go to Old Charlie's on Saturday night.
And something we talked about the other night, I guess Thursday night was, moving forward, we're gonna have to find ways to save money, and it was brought up about potential, I think Daisy called it, was it centralized purchasing?
Yes, something we've looked at.
You know, instead of, you know, all of our departments buying, I'm just gonna use copy paper, for example, copy paper from 10 different people, we have consolidated purchasing, and get a bid and purchase that all from one person, and get the best rate, you know.
And that's a great idea, and we've talked about...
We've gotta move forward and try to save money. I mean, I'm not saying we're...
No, I agree.
I've worked in manufacturing facilities for a long time, and that's how they did it. They had centralized purchasing, and you had a cage, and when you needed something, you checked it out, and that's, you know, you didn't just, if I needed bolts, I didn't get to go to the store and buy bolts, I had to go through the proper process of getting my bolts, so I agree, Kobe, and that's something, now, there will be a cost involved in that, because you're probably gonna have to add some space for a cage and a person to do that job, because it will change the way we do things. But it's, I think it's for the best.
We need to calculate whether it would save money to spend to do that.
Well, I mean, we kicked this around the other day. I talked to Director Smith about it the other day. They've got this county bus garage down here where they service buses. Why can't we service our, why can't we do something with that and service our buses, our police cars, and our amputations down there to a county employee? I mean, that would, I mean, we're paying them, that would save us money, and we would be buying oil and bulk. Maybe we get on, on the bid with the school board and buy gas and diesel from them. There's just, there's lots of things that we can do and look at and change the way we are and be better.
George, can I ask?
Absolutely.
I'm gonna make a statement first. For the first time, I'm kinda, I got a little frustrated with Daisy for the very first time, because of her doing her job.
It's not personal.
You mentioned it was on recording this year, I like it. But one of the, one of the main things we've got going on now is this maintenance work, as we've talked about, and I'm gonna tell you, and it's clear, I sent Daisy a copy of it, of our warranty, and just like not changing our oil in the vehicles, that can void our warranty, and I'm not as concerned about that as I am putting brakes on vehicles when they...
Right, absolutely.
But my big question is, I mean, and we've really gotta take another look at that some way, somehow, if possible, but my question is, the specialty money, like the drug court money, that can't be used for the drug fund, money that can't be used for anything else that's specific, it can't go in the general fund, is that money free? I mean, is that freed up to us to use? Is it still a liability?
Yeah, the cash, cash in each fund stands on its own, because the 122 fund cash would not be affected at all by the term funds issues.
Some of your other reserves are tied to the general fund.
And that's... You gotta be very, very guarded about how, there's only a certain road you can go down and spend that money, but there are, there are...
We're sorting out that Ford box, 59 vehicle, that, right? Valid things that's helped us out. And I, and I want to be clear, too, the one-on-one general fund, there's, some things are totally not involved with this, really three big ones. Schools, not involved with this. Roads, not involved with this, completely different fund. Solid waste, landfill, this has nothing to do. But I asked at one point that this is all because of landfill, it has zero real landfill. We can't move a dollar from that landfill even in general fund, and vice versa. So that's something, I'm glad that got brought up, because those are the three big funds that have nothing to do with this issue and are not affected by it, so.
The problem is, is we're about to build a sale with that.
Yeah, it's, there's money there, but it's a little tough to be, we, we're not...
Plus, we've got to start a post-plenty.
Any other comments tonight? I don't mean this just for denial, but during this whole process, sincerely, thank every commissioner that's been involved, I appreciate all the partners, everybody being here tonight, really mean that. This is, in 13 years, is probably the toughest and most important meeting I've ever been a part of, and I'm very thankful we've had participation, we've tried to chime in the way that, I don't expect us all to see eye to eye, but we're working through it, I appreciate it. Welcome anybody to come join us again Thursday night, Budget Finance Meeting at the Turner Building at the Compteur, 3:00, 5:00 p.m.
George, if you happen to have a crowd like this, the Compteur is not gonna hold them.
I agree.
I mean, that's simple.
Well, all we can do is, if there's availability, we can just have it. We'll let you know tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll send an email out, and if anybody, we'll make sure it's posted.
That's just another one of what else, you know?
It's a good, it's valid. Yeah, yeah.
You were ass, you weren't told.
No, and I do really appreciate it. That's a good point, Dave, thank you, Jeff. We'll check and see.
Is that when the decision will be made, as far as what?
All, all the decision, that's a good point, but let me bring this up. I talked about it next step. It was said in the election this past year that budget finance is what sets the budget. It's not true, we recommend it. The recommendation, I'm hoping, will be made Thursday night, but all it is, is a recommendation. And it may not happen Thursday night, I hope it is, and I think we're as far as we can. Recommendation will be made Thursday night. If there is an increase in the tax levy, there will have to be a public hearing. Ben, that's a good question, I'm a pro of the night, that doesn't have to be the same night it's voted on, does it?
No.
And we talked about, we probably set that a separate night, but we'll discuss that Thursday night as well. That'll be the second step, after the public hearing, the June, the 24th, whatever that last Monday in June is, I think it's 24th.
24th.
Yeah, 24th, that's when it will be decided, but hopefully, as long as the majority of commissioners can agree on something that night, that decision is not budget finance, the recommendation will come Thursday, it'll be June the 20th, the last Monday of June.
Chairman, I'm just gonna go ahead and bring it out to light tonight. County commission's always met on the second Monday, and I didn't realize until Thursday night that our June meeting is not the second Monday, it's the 24th of June. I was scheduled to be in Panama City on the 24th of June, and I'm gonna try any, every way possible to be here for that meeting. My wife is gonna kill me, but I don't know which is more, which is crazier, voting for a property tax or not showing up for a vote for a property tax, so just wanted to go ahead and throw that out there. I'm trying my best to find a light to send her on down to Panama City and fly out after the meeting. I'm gonna try my best to be there, because it's important.
If she kills you, you donate your life insurance to the county?
I did throw out one idea, we're gonna be a little loud, I thought we could use that last $20,000 and buy some fireball tickets, that might get us out. Not their best shot, but anyway. I don't, that probably... It would help us for many things. I want, Grant's question was valid, and Jeff touched on this, if we were able to sell the Baker property, would that help us out? It definitely would. The issue that we're looking at, though, is we have a recurring revenue problem. It's kinda like a situation, if you take a broke person and write them a check for $2 million, and they're spending a million dollars more two years now they're broken him. It would help, and I think Jeff is like we talked about, because they brought it up the night. I sat beside Dan Tink on that, at an event last year, and he said he had three RFIs in one week, so we're getting a lot, I think that's gonna be a good thing.
I'll just sell it. Yes, okay. Because I know that we had all that grant money that it was built to, or it was purchased to be an industrial site, and I just...
We would sell, we wouldn't sell it to an investor, we would sell it to a manufacturer.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Are you required to sell it to a manufacturer, under those...
I don't think so, because we've not used any of that money yet. That money will come into the site excavation and preparing those pads and building roads and infrastructure.
That's a great question, and it's one I should have brought up. It definitely would help, but it's not, it's part of the, part of the hassle. It's not a permanent fix, but it definitely...
Well, a permanent fix would be a good manufacturer and the jobs it brings.
Yeah, absolutely.
That would, that would be consistent revenue.
If there's nothing else from the budget finance committees, since it was a budget and finance committee work session, I'd entertain a host of proof.